We need Dean Andrews to begin, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, our other youth members hadn't arrived, so...
Well, I don't think we have...
Oh, okay.
I think as far as...
Love you, dear.
You got that.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
There's Dean.
He's two minutes late. He's loaded down. I'll just sit right there and tap on it like I did before. Don't want to mess it up. There should be any changes to the agenda or anything. They just want... Justin is the youth member that's here and Trent is in a school play, so he's...
Tuesday, August 21st, session of the Salina City Planning Commission to order. Crystal, if you're ready. Thank you. I'd like to introduce some new members of the commission. We have some new regular members of the commission, and I'm pleased to say that we have a couple of youth members. For a couple of years now, the city commission has discussed having youth participation on various of the city's commissions, and we've finally got some of that in place. And so the Planning Commission welcomes both Mr. Trent Brand, who unfortunately couldn't attend today because of his participation in a play, I believe, and Mr. Justin Walker. Justin, if you please stand. Justin's a student at Southeast Saline. We're glad to have him here with us. Thank you very much, Justin. We have new members to the commission. I'd like to welcome Jerry Boxa and Mr. Dave Norland. And for your guys' benefits, the other members of the commission, John Bossmeyer, Maxwell Brooks, Edna Purney, Max Blackwell, Ken Kennedy, Todd Welsh. Wow, I have to run down the whole list. And Pat Miccell and myself, Carl Ryan. So, that is the commission for this next year, and we all have terms varying in length. Dean, is there any comments you want to make about the youth members or their duties or how they fit in?
Yes, the idea is that Justin and Trent will always participate. They will be encouraged to give us their viewpoints and ask questions, the same as any other member. They will be encouraged to vote on the items that come before the commission, just as any other member. But as they are under a legal voting age under Kansas law, their votes won't count towards a majority or non-majority, but they are fully expected to be participants. And so they'll get packets just like you, and they should ask questions just like you and offer their viewpoints and opinions on every case and vote on every case. The only thing that won't count is towards an actual vote count of recommendation. Theirs will be silent as far as whether there's a majority or non-majority.
Okay. Thank you. So, let it fly. Ask all the questions you want. Our next item is approval of the summary minutes from the August 21st meeting. We've had those distributed in our packets. Is there any questions or comments or a motion to approve the minutes?
Chairman, I think I'm actually going to approve the minutes from the August 21st meeting.
Second. It's been moved in second. Are there any other remarks? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. A public hearing items begin today with application SP 12-1 filed by the city of Salina requesting a special permit allowing the placement of a wireless communication facility in Indian Rock Park. Is there a staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I go into the staff report, just related back to item two and the minutes there, I would report back to you that the city commission voted to accept your findings and recommendation as to the amended conditional use permit for hospice, subject to preparation of written findings and conclusions that they would adopt at their meeting on the 24th. But there was a majority vote on the commission to concur with your recommendation and to approve that. And so we appreciate all the time that the Planning Commission put into that, those hearings and discussions. As to this item, this application is filed by the city of Salina, specifically the Parks and Recreation Department, but I would not characterize this as a city initiative or city staff initiative. As we indicate there in our reports, and Mr. Lowthen, the Parks and Recreation Director, may be able to elaborate further, but we have been receiving quite a bit of contact from private cellular service providers who have identified a need for additional capacity in terms of antennas and service in this east Salina area, basically east of Ohio, north of Crawford, and in close proximity to Marymount Road. And they first looked, will often look at municipal water towers. The city of Salina, as a matter of policy, does not allow any private antennas or cellular service to be placed on a municipal water tower. Another location that they looked at was the Gypsum Hill Cemetery. And that is a public cemetery, and there is a statute and an opinion issued by the city attorney that the statutes that govern the use of Gypsum Hill Cemetery would not permit any sort of cellular service towers, whether it was done through a flagpole or any other type of device. So, that ruled those out, and then the providers started focusing on Indian Rock Park. And they had done that for several reasons. One, the city's ordinance identifies public open spaces, recreation areas, as one of the preferred locations for towers. And the second reason is that Indian Rock Park is very high in elevation. And so, we've had contacts from Sprint, from AT&amp;T, and from Verizon, all interested in doing something in Indian Rock Park. In response to that, the director of Parks and Recreation decided that the Parks and Recreation Department should be proactive, come up with an idea or concept of what they think would fit best within the park if there was going to be something placed there. And so they came up with this concept that is before you today, and that is the placement of flagpoles. And I'll see what, where John is jumping around to, but essentially, this would be a view from the channel roadside of the river into Indian Rock Park with flagpoles proportionate to 120 or 125-foot height. And so, this is the scenario that they came up with. I may ask you to back up to two there, John. Just for variance, this is the lower ground, which is Indiana Avenue. You've got the paved road that comes up and around up the hillside. This is the existing lodge building here. The lake or pond is down in this area. The overlook area is right here. There is a gravel area here and then a grassy island here. The idea was to place three flagpoles in this area and to have a compound that would be directly east of the existing lodge building. And within that compound, that would be the equipment compound area where switching equipment, electric gear, shelter buildings would be involved. And wanted to, by way of background, just say that the biggest change in why this commission is not going to see these types of requests die down anytime soon is that when the cellular industry started, people were using their phones to make phone calls. So, the most important thing was to have spread out taller towers that covered certain geographic areas so that calls could be relayed from cell to cell and not have any dead zones without service. Now, the issue is that people want to use their phones for texting and data streaming and viewing things and sending photos, and that creates a need for additional capacity, which means more towers or more high places closer together. And so I will do my best, because you as commissioners have seen some of these, but in recent times, we have seen a tower approved and built on North Knight Street across from St. John's Military School, which is a monopole tower. There is a monopole tower just to the east of Centennial Road, off of Copper Court there, which is just to the east of the K-State Salina campus. There was a tower approved at South High School at the athletic fields. There was a light pole at Salina Stadium that was replaced and substituted for a support for cellular antennas. There's a tower on Enterprise Drive, which is south of Schilling Road, and the city has a tower at East Crawford Recreation Area, which is 225 feet tall and has space for five providers on it. In addition to that, there are towers around the perimeter of the community in Saline County, and then people may or may not know, the first preference for service providers is we try to direct them to existing structures. So, the United Building is full of cellular antennas from a variety of providers. The Marymount Administration Building, which is at the corner of Marymount and Iron and has quite a bit of elevation there, has some rooftop units. The Kansas Wesleyan Science Building, which is a multi-story building at Claflin, or excuse me, Cloud and Fourth Street, has antennas on the top of it. And so, what we're finding is that the service providers have zeroed in on this area. We've given you quite a bit of information, but within there is a letter from Verizon, and Verizon says if they don't get some antennas or improved service in this service area before December 2012, then they're going to experience a loss of service, drop calls, insufficient capacity. So, this has come forward with you as an initiative from Salina Parks and Recreation, and this is what we would call a Class C wireless communication facility, which means that you are to hold a public hearing on this and get input and make your best recommendation to the city commission as to what should happen, and the city commission will make a final decision. So, we have outlined for you the locational preferences on page three of your report there, and the number one preference is for publicly owned sites. And then it mentions existing buildings, light poles, co-located on existing towers, screened rooftop facilities, or other camouflage sites. And then also recreation areas, athletic fields, school grounds, maintenance yards, and other, the last priority on the list is sensitive locations, sites located in predominantly residential areas, environmentally sensitive areas, entryway corridors, local landmarks or historic districts, and the environs of the Salina Municipal Airport. Obviously, you do not want to have cell towers within any approach zone of the Salina Municipal Airport. And then we have outlined for you the performance standards within the city of Salina, and all towers within the city have to be monopole towers, except we certainly encourage a camouflage design such as flagpoles or other things. We had a public meeting last Wednesday at the USD 305 offices over on Gypsum for neighbors who were interested, and we discussed the future of Indian Rock Park and answered questions about this specific request. And so, John, do you have the existing best service coverage map? I think it was eight. Any time that a cellular service provider files an application with the city, they've got to provide a coverage map that shows their existing coverage, where they have towers, and where there are gaps in service. I think the next one, John, is nine, is their proposed best service coverage. But they have zeroed in on this area right here as an area where they need additional capacity. And so, if you want to go through 10 through 13 there, John, slowly, well, these drawings are not from the city. They are from Verizon, and Verizon proposed how that space would be used. But this is the Indian Rock Lodge. This is the proposed equipment compound. You can go to the next one, John. And so this is how that space would be used. This is a 50 by 50 area. Here's the lodge. Here's a concrete pad for accessible parking. Here's the gravel area, and the flagpoles would be here. They have a lot of expensive switching equipment and sensitive equipment that they need to be fenced in compound. And so the thought was that that could be here, would be fenced in, could be screened in any fashion that anybody thought was appropriate, and then would be accessed off of this gravel roadway here. I think you've gotten in large detail there, John. And then again, this would be a gate into the compound, and this is how equipment would be arranged in there. Under the proposal that's before you today, if you had three flagpoles, each of those flagpoles would be capable of supporting up to two providers. And what's notable about the flagpole idea is that instead of having external antennas, the antennas and equipment would be contained within the flagpole. So, unlike a traditional monopole where you have the antennas hung on the pole, these would look just like this, where inside this would be equipment cabinets, so you'd have one here, one here, one here, and one here for a potential total of six. And there are not currently six providers in the city of Salina, but I am aware, or Deion is aware, of four who have expressed interest in this area, and that would be Verizon, AT&amp;T, Sprint, and Next Tech that is interested in getting into the market We did a PowerPoint presentation that we have available that has all sorts of examples in more detail of this that we can get into if you have questions. But the, just by way of background, again, I have on my desk an application from Next Tech that includes seven different applications for wireless communication facilities. They dropped off five with Saline County Planning, and now they've dropped off seven with us. So, this is not the last meeting you're going to have to discuss location and appropriateness of wireless communication facilities. And the reason we use that term is because it's not just towers. You can have wireless communication facilities that are attached to other things. Actually, building a tower is a last resort for them because it's very expensive for them to construct towers, and they only do that if they can't find any place else suitable for that purpose. So, I do want to refer you finally to page six of your staff report, and I don't believe John has enough graphics to keep track of this, so I'm going to read this. But one of the things we discussed at the public meeting that we held at the school district offices was that there are certain criteria that the Planning Commission and City Commission are supposed to consider in reviewing the appropriateness of a site for towers or other facilities. And one is the preference of the site location in accordance with the city's locational preferences. The second one is, is the proposal compatible with abutting property and surrounding land uses? The third one is, are there adverse effects such as visual, environmental, or safety impacts from the proposed location? Is the color and finish of the proposed tower compatible with the surroundings? Is there a potential for screening of using existing vegetation or structures or topography to help hide the tower structure? Are you able to get screening at ground level for the tower base? What is the scale of the facility in terms of height and all with the surrounding land uses? Would the tower location impact an entry corridor into the city? Would the tower location impact a landmark structure or historically significant structures or districts or architecturally significant structures? An application may be denied if the applicant has not shown that it has made good faith effort to mount the facilities on an existing structure or tower. So, part of that is, at East Crawford, there are five stations there for providers. They're all full. There's a tower on Franklin that's just east of Broadway. That tower is full. We've done one co-location at South High, and that tower is full. The owner of Marymount Administration Building has indicated they're not interested in accommodating additional antennas. And so, what we ask each provider to do is demonstrate that you've exhausted other opportunities for placing your equipment and that your only solution is to construct a new tower. So, again, our ordinances are designed to discourage the construction of unnecessary new towers and to try to guide new towers to the place that's most compatible and suitable. So, that is really what is for discussion today, is how compatible is this flagpole concept with the physical environment and setting of Indian Rock Park. And so, your options would be always to recommend something less than what is requested. So, if the Planning Commission feels that three flagpoles are too many, that can be reduced. If the Planning Commission feels that the height is, that 140 feet for one of the flagpoles is too tall, that can be reduced. If the Planning Commission feels that there has to be a certain amount of screening around the compound, that can be a condition. But essentially, you have four alternatives today. Recommend the proposal as submitted by the Parks and Recreation Department. Recommend approval of it with some modification, which could be fewer flagpoles, lower heights, those types of things. You could postpone consideration and continue this hearing if you'd like staff to provide you with additional information, or you can decide that this is not an appropriate location for any type of wireless communication facility and recommend that the proposal be denied. So, with that, I'd be open to any questions that you have in your packet. You've got some feedback that we've received from neighboring property owners, some resulting from our public meetings, some that we received before. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. We've also, for your reading enjoyment, included a background report on the cellular service industry and what the trends are and what local governments are allowed to regulate and what the Federal Telecommunications Act does not allow local governments to deal with. So, I'd be open to any questions on that as well.
This is perhaps an insignificant technical question, but it does say towers up to 140 feet in height. And one of the places in the proposal that refers to 130-foot tower, you mentioned 120 to 125 feet. One of my questions was in the illustration, one of the towers, the central one appears to be taller than the other. Are they anticipating a difference in the height of those towers? Will they all be the same? Is it just a matter of perspective that I see? Thank you for the...
Well, we helped Mr. Lowthen put the application together. What you have generally seen is that the, each of these, if they're going to be clustered, they need to be set at different elevations so that, and if there are certain closeness together. So, the idea was that one of the standards would be perhaps up to 140 feet in height. The other ones could be lower. The other thing that I indicated to Mr. Lowthen was that the Planning Commission can always decrease, but you can't increase once you ask. So, most providers ask for the maximum height that they could foresee, utilizing, realizing that that could be lowered by the Planning Commission, but never, you couldn't have an application for 140-foot tower and then approve one that's 160. But you could have an application for 140-foot tower and say, "That's too tall. It needs to be limited to 120." So, the concept was that one of the towers would be taller than the other two, so conceivably it could be up to 140 feet and the other one's lower. But that is all discretionary for you as to what's too high.
I think typical flag protocol is that if you're going to have a cluster of flags, the American flag needs to be set higher than state flags, and so I think that's probably why you see a variance in the one that's set as the United States flag.
And they are all three being used for the transmission?
Yeah. Well, the concept is that they would not ever be built unless there was a demand for them. The city would not put up the flagpoles. They would, if somebody wanted to come forward with that, it would still be the cellular service provider that would construct that, and there may be one flagpole there for five years. But the idea was that you would have the potential, have to place up to three flagpoles there, which could accommodate eventually up to six users. But if this were approved and there were no cellular providers that actually wanted to construct the flagpole there, the idea here is that rather than responding to what a private provider might propose, the Parks and Recreation Department's getting out proactively and saying, "This is what we'd like to see, and if this is what is approved, then this is what you're limited to," or again, the alternative is to determine that this isn't the right place for it.
Dean, this might be a technical question for the applicant, but the mechanical building, for lack of a better term, is there a certain distance that has to be from the towers themselves?
Not necessarily. In many cases, they're right underneath the tower, and the tower is within the same compound. But the reason for that here is that this is a grassy island that's out in the open. You wouldn't want... You wouldn't want a fenced-in compound with buildings around this. So as long as they're within close proximity, this would work. But most of the towers, there's a fenced compound underneath the tower and the buildings are within that compound.
Are they hardwired or is it a wireless communication?
No, they are hardwired. There's actual electric wiring that connects them.
Does staff have any photos of a 48 by 50 compound? Has there been one built that large? And maybe applicant's bringing one, but it's going to be more my concern is a 48 by 50 compound, what are we actually looking at obstructing in the park? I think the flags aren't...
48 by 50 is the fencing, is that...
The size of the area would be 40 by 50. I think that would be comparable to size to what is at East Crawford, except nobody can really see what is at East Crawford. And then I believe, Mr. Kennedy, that both the compounds at South and at the Salina Stadium are slightly smaller than 50 by 50. One of them I know is approximately 50 by 26 feet, but they are not 50 by 50. But obviously, the more providers you are having, the more space you need in the compound. The other thing that is discretionary for you is that you can say the compound has to be smaller. You can say that there can't be any buildings. Some of the providers where there's not enough room for multiple buildings essentially have an equipment cabinet, which would be comparable to what you see at an intersection in Salina where there's a cabinet that controls the traffic signals. And so in some of our tower sites where there is not enough room for a building for each provider, they have an equipment cabinet instead of a building. So you have the discretion to say the compound's too big and it needs to be smaller, or you can say that there can't be any buildings in the compound. All we are sharing with you conceptual plans that were provided to us by private providers of what they would do if allowed to.
Okay. On page four of the staff report, under Performance Standards, number three says towers should be set back public right-of-way distance equal to the tower height. So you're talking 130, 140-foot towers. And on the site plan, they appear to be 20, 25 feet away from Glenerford Hills Drive. How does that fit in?
Glenerford Hill Drive is not a public street or a public...
It isn't. I just drove on it.
But it is not a street.
It's not a street?
No. It's a park driveway.
So park driveway is not a street?
No.
So that means no speed limit, he hopes?
The speed limit, the curfew, all that are established by park rules and not by the rules that apply to a street.
Okay, so this is an exception that isn't immediately clear. But the rationale I was saying was that if it blows down in a storm, it wouldn't blow across your right-of-way. And of course, they're not allowed to do that. There's no necessity of using park driveway as your...
The rationale is actually to get it, if you could go back to one of the aerials, John. The rationale is that you not have it sitting 30 or 40 feet from Gypson Avenue, which is a public right-of-way. So that, the idea is to get it into a remote or isolated area. But that is setback from the property line or public right-of-way. The public rights-of-way here would be Indiana Avenue and Gypson Avenue, but not anything in the park.
Okay. My other technical question is actually how big is one of these that's 130 feet tall? Because they look, they don't look like a normal flagpole. It looks like it's like six feet diameter at the bottom and three or four feet diameter at the top.
That is, the circumference of these is typically 24 to 25 inches in circumference measuring around the base. So it is much thicker than a typical flagpole. And so one of the things that is important, if you want to go back to the elevation, John, I think I'm after either three, four, or five. But these poles are much thicker around than a typical flagpole. And so both because of height and because of the size of the pole, if you hung a conventional flag on there, it would be out of proportion and not look right. So in order to do this and make it fit and be proportional, then the flags that are on there need to be out of that size. But if you took a tape and measured around that, the circumference would be 24, 25 inches.
If it's only that, that's only eight inches diameter. That can't be right. At any rate.
I thought the detail showed that.
Who made all these amendments to flags?
I'll let Mr. Louthen speak to that and how the Parks and Recreation Department would see this operating if it were approved. Thank you.
To your question... Hold up here. Are we into the letting the applicant?
No, but we're going to let Mr. Louthen respond to Mr. Purney's question.
All right. To your question, it would probably, where I was at prior, we negotiated that into the lease where the contractor or the provider of the cellular service provided the flags for that. So as you needed a new one, that was part of the contract, they would provide those flags for us. So that would be part of the contractual negotiations if and when we got to that point.
Are the flags going to be proportional to the size of the tower?
You know, they have to be, from my experience. If not, as Dean said, they just look really tacky, if not, in my opinion. It just doesn't look right. So...
Are there any on the flags? They'll have to be lighting.
Correct.
That'll be the provider's response.
Yeah. All of the maintenance of the pole, of the lighting, of the flags themselves would fall back, we would negotiate back to in the contract with the provider or attempt to.
Other questions of staff? Dean, did I, although I see in the packet that the local zoning makes this preferred site, the federal law says we can't unreasonably discriminate among the providers. And it sounds like we have multiple providers that are negotiating for this usage. And we can't use local zoning to prohibit wireless, and we also can't regulate on environmental effects. Is that kind of a...
Well, in terms of the discrimination, if this proposal came to you from Sprint Wireless and you denied it, and then AT&amp;T came in with the exact same plan and you approved it because it was AT&amp;T, that would be discrimination. So that is not allowable. We, the local governments have the discretion to say yes or no that these are appropriate or not appropriate sites. So that, it is, what it's basically saying is you can't have a local ordinance that prohibits the construction of cell towers. You have to make some accommodation, but you can decide where and what they look like and everything else. As to the environmental, that deals with the electromagnetic waves that are used in cellular service, and the local governments don't have the discretion to monitor or deal with that. That is addressed at the federal law level, and local governments can't say that your application is denied because cellular service uses electromagnetic frequencies. So those are the three things. But locally, all local governments have the discretion to say yes or no, a particular location is appropriate or inappropriate. Thank you.
That was, go ahead. I mean, what is the length of the lease?
There are no leases. There are no agreements. There's nothing in place with any providers. This, the idea behind this, and Mr. Louthen can explain better than I, but the idea is that this, if we had a pre-approved plan that the community agreed with, then we could tell the providers, "We have a place for you if you're willing to abide by these things," and a lease agreement could be agreed to. But there are no leases. There are no providers. There's nobody signed up for this. This is an attempt by Parks and Recreation to be proactive and say, "Instead of responding to private requests, let's look at what might fit best from their perspective in this park."
And this may be a better question for the applicant, but I feel quite certain that they're trying to find a way to improve technology so that there aren't needs for 150-foot towers scattered all across communities. And so let's say that a new technology was developed two years from now, would the city of Salina own three towers that were no longer needed for what they originally put together?
The lease would require that if the providers no longer needed the towers, they would be removed, if they needed to be removed. So if the tower at East Crawford, which the city leases ground for the tower, it's not our tower. If that ever ceased to be used for cellular service, the owner of that tower would be required to dismantle it. But there are changing technologies and the ability to get lower and lower. But for now, the cellular service is a line-of-sight service. And so they relay signals from place to place and tower to tower, and they need a certain altitude or elevation to do that so that it's not obstructed by trees or buildings or things like that because it is a line-of-sight technology.
I have another question that bears on the federal considerations Mr. Ryan was talking about. On page four, just following what he was citing, again, about federal regulations, says, "Local governments must act on applications to place, construct, or modify personal wireless service facilities within a reasonable period of time. Local government decisions denying personal wireless facility applications shall be in writing and supported by substantial evidence contained in a written record, and any person adversely affected by a state or local decision concerning personal wireless facilities may commence an action in federal or state court." And that similarly concerns me. The tenor of this is that we might not have any control over it. I think you addressed that in part.
Well, all of those things apply to anything that this commission deals with, and it has happened before. It happened, I think, in 2011. There was a decision that this commission made that was not agreeable to a property owner, and they filed an action in district court. The city prevailed in that action, but that remedy is available in almost any type of zoning action that somebody that feels agreed by that can file an action in district court. The difference, because it's the Federal Telecommunications Act, that also opens federal court for that. But the, part of that is to keep people like me or others from simply sitting on applications and not, somebody files an application and we don't schedule it for action, or we don't have a hearing, or we don't give them a decision, and it's six months into it and they don't have a decision. That is designed to remedy that situation. But again, this is an application filed by the city of Salina and not by any providers. But I mentioned the seven applications that I have from Next Tech. If I sat on those in my office and didn't do anything or schedule them for planning commission consideration, that would be, give them grounds to go to court that we didn't respond to their application. Now, they have to be complete, and they have to show that they have permission from the landowner to move forward and those types of things. But it's, they went to Congress and got those things because the providers are getting it at both ends. They find it difficult to get approved sites, and they're also getting beat up by their customers by not providing enough speed, enough capacity, enough 4G data. And so they want to keep their customers, they want to keep their customers happy. And in order to do that, they like to try to move quickly. And I said, "I've had some contact." Mr. Louthen can speak to that better, but let's just say that they can be pretty aggressive with their ideas and their timetables.
I have one more staff report question on page two. There's a statement that the Gypson Hill Cemetery can't be used due to statutory limits. What's the nature of the statutes? Who, is it a state law, federal law?
It is a state statute, and it limits for use for human burial purposes only. And the city attorney has interpreted that to exclude all other uses from the Gypson Hill Cemetery. So we had a proposal from Verizon to construct similar flagpole considerations in Gypson Hill Cemetery, and we informed them that Gypson Hill Cemetery was not an eligible location due to the city attorney's opinion, and they moved from Gypson Cemetery to Indian Rock Park as their area of interest.
Kind of along those lines, what is the technical reason why we don't allow cell towers on water towers?
There are liability issues. There are protecting the water supply issues. But basically, if somebody builds a tower, like the one at East Crawford, that's owned by a private tower provider, and if there are maintenance issues or there are people climbing on that, that is their liability, that is their responsibility. City of Salina does not want cellular service technicians or others climbing around on its water towers. And the other thing is just to maintain the security and integrity of the water supply. And the third reason is that the only antennas that you can have on a water tower would be related to public safety needs. And so it's reserved for that purpose and not for any private purpose. But that is a policy of the city of Salina not to allow these on public water towers.
Are there any other communities that you know of that are doing that?
There are very few communities that allow them on public water towers, but there are some, yes.
Just from an altruistic standpoint, it seems like you've got a fenced-in area around a water tower. It seems like all of the stuff is there. You've got something that's tall, that's, you know, you've got a fenced-in area, you've got, you know, multiple overlapping uses.
And not all of our towers have that. The tower that's at Belmont in Magnolia doesn't have any fenced-in area around.
Right across the river from there, I can't remember the street, but up by the cemetery up there is a water tower. Certainly, what is that street?
Glen.
Glen? You know, it's approximately the same height as that.
And the planning commission has it within its discretion to recommend that the city change its policy and allow or encourage that. But we're here today because Gypson Hill Cemetery is ruled out, Gypson Hill Water Tower is ruled out, and they, we have interested providers who have zeroed in on Indian Rock Park as area in which they'd like to locate. And you, as a commission, can decide whether that's a good or bad concept. And if the commission wants to go on record that thinks the city should change its mind about water towers, you can do that. But you'll also have to persuade Ms. Tasker that that's a good idea.
Other questions for staff?
Other questions for staff? May I hear from the applicant? Mr. Luthen, am I saying that right?
Correct.
And Secretary, I'd like your name and address if you'd...
Dion Mallon, Parks and Recreation. I'll keep my comments brief. Dean did a pretty good job of summarizing our position, but just to give you a little bit, a little bit of background, it's, this is not something we just decided to do. Basically, what happened is we kept getting phone calls and getting phone calls from providers, and we were trying to get a little bit ahead of the game, and this was kind of an area they had zeroed in on. So, we thought that if we could go out, design something that was two ordinance, referentially speaking, and hitting the big parts of that, that may be a good way to move forward. The other part that we looked at too certainly is, we don't want it to distract from the park or create an adverse visual impact, and certainly you could, you could argue that it might, because they are, they are tall towers. But we were looking at with, with what we had, we believe this was a reasonable alternative. We focused on the camouflage and basically where we put not only the flagpoles in relationship, but also the, for lack of a better term, the compound. The compound was tucked over the hill just a little bit right there, it gives us some height, and then with the landscaping we provide around it, we thought we could keep it pretty natural-looking as well. Again, it is a 50 by 50 area, so some, certainly something to consider on that. When we went through it, again, the focal point, and Dean hit this, so I won't, I won't beat it up a lot, but we absolutely wanted to make sure that, that by ordinance, we were in line, and we were trying to get ahead of the game, if you will, and it seemed like they just kept coming and kept coming, and we had more and more and more, so we were trying to get something out there. We had a pre-planned spot that we controlled, so to speak, where you came in, you built to our, our standards to meet our needs and make it look as good as we possibly could. The second piece, which really isn't a factor here, but also there is a revenue consideration too, that's an alternative revenue stream to the city. We would attempt to try to use some of those funds to go back into the park there, and again, I'm just giving you that for informational purposes, but if these were approved, and this is something that we were to go out and negotiate with, that is something that is of benefit to Parks and Recreation, if you will, or the park, if you will, potentially. I would open up for any questions. Dean covered kind of where we came from pretty well, I won't beat up any of that stuff, a lot of the stuff that I had here, he is...
Did we share them? John, have we shown any of the lodge pictures that we shared at the public meeting?
Not yet, no.
We can show you a couple of the drawings that we have of the lodge. The lodge that's up there right now, we would potentially look to utilize some of the funds if this, this were something that were approved, to put in a new lodge, update it, and, and give us a different picture. That's kind of a layout of how the new lodge would look. There's some elevation views up, you can see a viewing deck that would be off the west side and look back that direction as well. Kind of a layout inside. Nothing fancy or anything like that, but just a nice area for rentals for, you know, different types of events that you may have or that may be of interest. The one that we have up there right now is, it's pretty open and it's in, it's in some disrepair right now, and we were trying to get something that's, you know, maybe a little bit nicer, and this was a thought that we had. There's again, a different elevation or a different look from below. That would be looking west there. The flagpoles, if you will, would be on the left side of that picture, and the, the flagpoles would be on this side, kind of where you see the, the grass there in the lower-left portion. When you look at there, the compound then would be located adjacent, just south of the flagpole, so if you will, again, tucked over the hill, there's a little bit of fall that happens there. We want to take advantage of that fall where we could kind of get that duck down, so if you were looking at from, you know, eye level, so to speak, it would be below that. But other than that, again, Dean covered it pretty well, I won't, I won't beat it up anymore. We were just trying to get out there, get something out in front of the game a little bit and see if we couldn't to work something out. Be happy to ask, answer any questions that you may have, and...
Questions, Mr. Luthen?
Go ahead.
No, I just, I was asking for questions. Go right ahead.
Mr. Luthen, I do have a question. This question was precipitated by several of the comments from people that we heard from in this packet, and particularly by Marilyn Horverson. One of the things that they talked about is the natural beauty of the place, and as a attraction, we don't want to change, and I understand that. But more specifically, Miss Horverson mentioned the big American historical significance of Indian Rock Park. And so, I did a little bit of checking about the national historic sites. I checked with Pat Murphy, who is, is an Ioway tribesperson, but is on the National Board for Preservation of Historic Sites. He referred me to Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act, which has to do with the viewscape as well as the traditional distributive any native places. His understanding is that there is no specific variable, Indian variable site there that we're aware of. But at his direction, I also checked with the State Historical Society, it's in Weston there, and so, maybe you could help clear this up in my mind. It appears that any, that this becomes under the Telecommunications Act, so it's a federal issue as well, something that, this has to be cleared, the Section 106 proposal has to be done. And he was saying by the companies who are going to put that, or by whoever is going to put that there, whether it's selective site consultant or wherever. So, I guess my questions are two. First, has this been done to your knowledge, and what's its place in the procedure? Because it appears that this, like some of the other federal regulations or something we have not as we go through this process.
My understanding from talking to staff, to answer your first question, I'm not aware of anything that's been done on that behalf, other than internally, we had looked at, was it on any of these registers, so to speak, in terms of historic pieces? And it was not on anything that we had pulled. Therefore, once we had cleared that hurdle, that's when we had taken the next step internally, and I believe that, I think John had done some research on that as well.
John, you might want to show them the type of letters that you've written on other projects and locations. Generally, that's done prior to any actual permits are issued to construct a tower, but that review is usually dedicate, or delegated to the local level, and I know that, that John Berger has responded to those on different locations. So, John, you want to describe the letter that we've written in some cases?
As Mr. Andrew described, we do receive a letter from the State Preservation Office, and also the contractors working with the cell companies, and that's a requirement that they send notice to the local jurisdiction to allow them to apply to a Section 106 request, which basically means, "Does this project affect a property that's on the state or national register or potentially eligible for the state or national register?" And we, as a local entity, will give our opinion on that and write back as part of that 106 review. That also is done by the State Preservation Office, so we're not the only entity, we're one that's contacted. At this point, the park itself isn't on the state or national register. It's a historic site, but that is a very minimal protection by the, the heritage mission, which would protect only removal of significant features, and at this point, it would, it would take quite a landfill project to affect significant features in the park. But we would receive a 106 request on this proposal when that project came to their attention.
You will receive it in terms of our attention?
We receive it for every cell tower in Salina. Slane County also receives those out in, in the county itself, so we're not the only entity, but we do provide our opinions on properties within the city limits.
And I, I understand what you're saying. To paraphrase, I want to check, I make sure I'm hearing you right, that this site may not fall under that historic act, is not at the level that would require it? Am I getting that right?
It would be an opinion that they asked us to provide as part of the 106 review as a federal mandate. We would have our opinion, the State Preservation Office would also have theirs. They're familiar with the site, and they'd be able to respond. I'm not sure what their reply would be.
Yeah, Mr. Luthen was familiar with the site when I talked to him, but we, we haven't initiated this, or no one has, as far as you're aware?
And not as a historic site. We have provided a minimal protection in 1997 to, to 235 notable sites in Salina that were identified in a Historic Resources Survey in 1985, and the Indian Rock Park was selected as an historic site, but as far as the items that are being protected there, that wasn't really defined. There was no broad estimation.
Mr. Luthen, it was mentioned that the towers would have to be lighted because there would be flags flying on them. Are these, tell me about the lights, are they shining up into the sky from the ground down below, or?
I've seen different mounting options. What we probably prefer is that they go up on, actually onto the pole, and they, they don't like that sometimes, but the idea would be is that you would make that light spill, that light splash as minimal as possible, so you're just lighting the flag. I've seen some lit from the bottom, I've seen some where they mount the light about a portion of the way up to light the flag to. That would be something we would have to negotiate. From our standpoint, we would want something that has as little light splash or spill as possible. We'd want it to light the flag as it's supposed to, but no, do no more than that.
And would there be a requirement to have any flashing lights?
There's none, none by the FCC, or, I mean, the FAA, if that's what you're getting at, so...
There's no airport?
I think, two fif, is it 250 feet metering that?
Any tower over 200 feet in height. And the only tower in Salina that has a light at the top is the 225-foot tower at East Crawford. None of the other towers have lighted. Our ordinance actually prohibits having a light on it unless it's required by the FAA.
This compound storage building, is it going to be adequate size for all six carriers if at some point they just need that, or are we going to be looking at adding another storage unit as more carriers are added?
No, I think it would be, and I think we would go back to kind of what Dean talked about, is this 50 by 50 area is what we would have to work with. So, when they came to us, we would dictate to them that this is the area that we have, and we would break it down for them. So, that would determine, hey, maybe they can do a building, or maybe they have to do like a cabinet like Dean talked about to make it even smaller, to keep that footprint within that approved area.
Are you aware of the maximum distance that the building can be from the tower?
I'm not, technically speaking. I don't know what that could be. There's, there's certainly the possibility that could, you know, if we wanted it further, so to speak, I mean, that would certainly be something we could look at.
In the report, it says that we believe this tower would be less obtrusive than other possible locations in East Salina. Are you aware of the other locations that they're, that they're talking about? I mean, do you know how many possible locations have been identified? But that, I know that you wanted to get this out there, but at the same time, I'm just wondering, what else are we talking about as far as options B's through whatever?
You know, I don't want to speak too far, I just know the requests that have came to me, and if you're talking about obtrusive, I think that part of that may have been what's already out there, what's been designed. I'm not aware of, and Dean can correct me here, where, a lot of them that we have now are the monopole variety, so the antenna and what have you, a lot of it is on the outside. This one is, when I, more visually appealing in my opinion, because it is all housed internally, so there is nothing that's on the outside. But in terms of, to answer your question specifically, I'm just aware of the ones that have come to me and requested from me, so...
That statement is attributable to the cell service providers, not staff. It is the cell service providers who believe or tried to persuade us that this is a less obtrusive location than a...
Selective site consultant?
Yes.
So, was the Highway Patrol area considered, or the Country Club, or, I assume that we are not going into commercial properties really, but public entities?
Good questions, I think, and I don't want to speak, you know, too clearly, I guess, unless I'm not positive, but Dean may be able to jump in there too, but the Highway Patrol, I believe there's some security pieces of them not wanting folks up there.
They will not allow anything either on their existing towers, or they, for security, they want those exclusively for public safety. The, the Salina Country Club is another possible location, but no one has approached them that I know of, and most of the Salina Country Club is actually outside the city limits.
And Mount Calvary Cemetery would be excluded because it's dedicated for sepulcher, and that's not allowed for commercial purposes?
That would not necessarily be excluded either, but that, Mr. Bankson's opinion dealt with the publicly-owned portion, which is Gypson Hill Cemetery, which is subject to a state statute.
How about camouflage? Couple of things come to mind. Does this building have to be ground-level, or could it be backed off to the west and set down the hill? And we're aware, some other materials have been given of towers or poles, whatever, has the equipment mounted in it up, being in something that resembled a tree? Those options, I mean, I kind of like the patriotic flagpole thing that goes around here, but...
We looked at, from my chair, we looked at some different options, and you know, you could say, you know, a tree in a park, certainly, you would think would fit and blend, but when we, when we stepped back and took a look at all the different ones that were out there, ultimately, we thought the flagpole fit the best. Where I was at, prior, with prior experience, we had multiple ones of those of different trees, we had bell towers, we had all sorts of different things like that. Some of the trees were tastefully done, some not, and some of the flagpoles frankly, frankly, were tastefully done and some not. Again, too, the question that was raised earlier, the, the flag size is really important to make it look right. If it's, the flag's not right, it doesn't look right, it's just not very tactful, so... To answer your question, we looked at other things, this is ultimately what we believe would be the right fit for the park, for, for this type of project.
John, did you, in PowerPoint, did you go through and show some of those other examples other than flagpoles? Did we get that far? Any of those later images, John?
That'll show you an idea, that's kind of how the flagpole sets up. You can see it's got the...
This is the interior.
That pole off, that's the interior of it right there, the guts where they place, place their, their equipment, and then obviously, the exterior goes back on.
This, this is an antenna array on a light pole. There's one built into the base of this pole sign right here, similar to the flagpole design.
That's good looking.
This is, that's not actually a functioning water tower, it's a fake water tower.
And those are fake palm trees?
It's a fake cross.
Oh, there you go.
So, those are, those are just some illustrations of other alternatives that we would call stealth or camouflage approaches that are not flagpoles.
Thank you. Any other questions?
What's the purpose of, of the 2,500 square foot, 50 by 50 area? I mean, it seems like it's an awfully large area for six cell providers that are going to use an area of vending machine each. Is that, does that have two or three trucks in there at one time, or?
No, some of them too will have backup generators to power them and power out, just so you've got your, your cabinet space and then your backup generator that would run in the event that they, they lost power, so... And I'll be frank with you, we're taking some of this off of what was originally proposed by Verizon and what we received from them, and just spacing that, that out, if you will. Again, the idea would be, you know, if you felt like we should be a little smaller, certainly we could look at that a little bigger, you know, anything there in between.
You can conceal a small area, and we've experienced some expansion.
Well, and that's a good point, to Dean's point, we have nobody right now that is, that we're, we have a contract with or anything like that. We're just simply saying that based on what we're seeing, request-wise, we were trying to get a little bit ahead, hence the six, but maybe a starting point is one, I don't know, but we could definitely, you know, move in and out based upon your, your input and your feedback, if that's something that was palatable.
In order to minimize the number of tower sites, our ordinance basically coerces the, the providers to cooperate with each other, so that if there were something done here, it would be required to, if you could size that compound a lot smaller, if you were willing to have a separate compound for each provider. But the, the id, and it doesn't have to be 50 by 50, but the, the idea is that if you have multiple service providers, they're each going to need their own space within the compound for their own equipment, so rather than, than Verizon designing it just for them, or Sprint designing it just for them, or A, we force them to provide sufficient area that multiple service providers can be served by the same area. We are, and I, I don't have all the particulars, but I do know that at South High, Verizon was the first provider on that tower, and there is now a second provider there, and there wasn't sufficient room to have two buildings, so they have an equipment cabinet as opposed to a second building. So, it, it's... So it's a function of that, but everything about this is discretionary. If the poles are too tall, they're too tall. If the compound area is too big, it's too big. But this is something that is being proposed based on the information that we have received from providers who have expressed interest in this area.
Is there any plans, or is there any budget items for the improvement of that lodge if this were not to go through?
It's in the CIP, but it's in the designated but unfunded.
So it's--
You know, we'd love to, and it's certainly on, it's on the list, if you will, but there is no designated funding source for it right now, so, you know, it could happen, certainly.
There's not a timeline close.
There's not.
I'm thinking about an article that appeared in the Salina Journal two days ago or so about the city of Mission, Kansas, who is contemplating outlawing the use of cell phones in cars altogether. And one of the comments that's made there is that they're going to get heat from the public, because they're used to talking on cell phones. And by the way, they're just talking. They're not texting or, you know, checking for internet or whatever, they're just talking. But the point is that it has to do with adjustment of public perception about what they would like to have. It seems to me we may not have a shortage of cell sites, but a long age of expectations. And I see the rationale of the city, there's money to be made, certainly income to the city is a beneficial thing, and I would be for that too. But I really think that despite all the questions I might have, for example, are we willing to shrink that 48, 50 by 50 box to about half or quarter? And is that even feasible? That would be one technical question, but I think it needs to be raised in this hearing as to whether or not this planning commission, I realize we really, we're just here to advise the city commission, but whether we ought to consider, as many of the people here have expressed, that they want to preserve Indian Rock Park as it is, if it's not out of line to say, you know, let's look at other places, if indeed there are other places, and let's look at asking the public and the providers to reduce their expectations.
Sure. I would throw one thing out there. The money piece is certainly a secondary piece. What drove this whole thing was definitely them approaching us, and by the ordinance, they kind of get funneled to me because they're looking for open space, recreational areas, as those are the high priority pieces. So that's kind of where this whole, the whole thing got started, if you will. Again, I'm not going to lie, it'd be nice to be able to do something with the lodge up there, if we generate some extra funds. But having said that, certainly that's a secondary piece to it, and that was not the driving force, so.
I like those pictures. Anyone get it?
Well, I, for one, appreciate you being proactive and bringing this before the commission. It's actually better to hear it this way than hearing seven, or 10, or 15 different individual, you know, items, so.
No, and I agree with you that the revenue is really not the most important thing in this at all. I mean, we need to be proactive about developing the system. I mean, how many of us have been at a KU basketball game, not football, or a K-State football game? And your cell phones don't work because the capacities outclass the system, so. And that's fast coming here, as I understand the logic of your technical presentation in our sheets, so we need to be ready for that. Judging from the age of the group here, probably they aren't using as much data as my kids do, but they're all clamoring for more data usage.
I think for Mr. Louthen's perspective as well, wherever the planning commission ends up and city commission comes down on this, it's only going to be helpful to city staff, because if the end result of this proposal is that it is deemed by the planning commission and city commission that Indian Rock is not an appropriate site, then when people come to Mr. Louthen, he can just say, no, the people have spoken, and Indian Rock Park is not a place to consideration. But until we go through this process and have it go through this public participation, we don't, we don't know, we can't speak with authority to that. So that's the other advantage of going through this public hearing process, is when we get at the end of this, Mr. Louthen will know, one way or another, whether Indian Rock is viewed as an acceptable location or not.
One more question about alternative locations. For adequate cell coverage service, do you know, would several of these flagpoles at East Crawford or on the municipal golf course serve the coverage needs? Because to me, those would be better alternative sites. We've already trashed East Crawford with that monstrosity, and it wouldn't hurt it to have flagpoles.
Good question, and I don't want to speak over my head here technically, but from my understanding, the cell providers have these rings that they draw, and that's how they kind of hone into these areas where they're looking to cover their, quote unquote, shortage, according to them. So I can't answer the question, I just know that I, my, from my chair, this is a spot they've honed in on, from Gypsum Hill to here, and so on and so forth. Could that work? Certainly possible. We'd have to ask them if that's, you know, a location that they could do that at.
Other questions for the applicant?
I just want to say, and this is, I want to say that I like the idea of city income to the city, for the benefit of the city. I understand what Dean is saying about the water tower problems with security, which are similar to the Highway Patrol's concerns, but it does seem to me that you have an existing high elevation that might be considered for a change in city policy as an alternative. So I'll just make that up.
Sure. If there are no more questions for the applicant, we'll open the public portion. And I would just invite, come up, we can do that in orderly fashion, we're all friends, or you can line up there at the podium. The secretary would like to have your name and address as you--
I'm Debbie Vine. I live at 1748 Glenn Avenue, the street that was mentioned earlier. I apologize, I was not able to be at the public meeting, so I wrote a letter to Mr. Andrew and then found I could be here today, so if you, with your indulgence, I'm going to read the letter to you. I've learned from my neighbors that the Parks and Recreation Department is proposing to install three, quote unquote, "flagpoles" up to 140 feet in height as supports for cellular service antennas within Indian Rock Park. Your notice does not mention the diameter of these structures, I've since learned that today, nor does it mention that they might require blinking red lights on them, as so many cell towers do. Nor does it mention that the structures will need to be fenced to prevent people from climbing the towers, possibly using them as diving towers now. That has been adjusted since I've seen the pictures, but that is one thing you must consider when you create things in public parks, recreational areas. While I was on the city commission, the commission reluctantly approved the cellular tower at the Markley Road Ball Complex, with the understanding and agreement from the staff that this tower would provide sufficient space for cell tower needs, and that no other towers would be necessary then or in the future. I guess 11 cell towers later, we weren't quite right about that. The commission was indeed concerned then about the proliferation of cell towers in Salina, and it now appears that our concerns were very justified. Indian Rock Park has historic significance to this community, it has a prominent visual place along the Smoky Hill River complex. Covering up the park landscape with cell towers degrades the park, and with the compounds also decreases the amount of space available for public recreational activities. It also degrades the visual environment for those of us who live nearby, and I would invite each and every one of you to come to my home to see what the potential degradation will occur. While I don't live within that 400 feet vicinity of the proposed development, I will be adversely impacted by this proposed use of park property, and I oppose this application and would like your opposition to it also. I respectfully request that you abide by the early agreement that the city commission had, that no other cell towers be mounted within the city of Salina. Thank you for your attention, and if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask. Thank you.
Debbie, can you think of any other locations that would be more appropriate than this?
Well, the water tower is on the east of me, so, you know, and it's already a tall existing thing with antennas all over it. I appreciate the suggestion that we cluster them, because I suspect the technology will change within the very near future, and we won't need tall towers anymore, because line of sight will be out of date. So I suggest using the existing, already cluttered up places. And Markley Road has plenty of space. Now, I understand they've got these little circles, but I don't understand exactly why they're so small. You might look into that. Thank you.
I'm Bill Medina, and this is my wife Peggy. I'm speaking on behalf of two properties within the zone that received the letter, but more importantly, as a citizen of Salina, because all of Salina will be impacted, not just those that received the letter. Indian Rock Park is unique in that it is different than most of the other parks in Salina. It doesn't have ball fields or tennis courts or entertainment venues. It is, for the most part, a low-traffic scenic wildlife habitat. People go to Bill Burke, or Dean Evans Stadium, or even Oakdale Park and expect to see hot dog vendors and pop machines. These are higher-traffic parks. People go to Indian Rock Park to exercise, meditate, take in the natural beauty of the park, and enjoy the peace that, for the most part, has been, has not been domesticated. Most everyone here probably has a story about Indian Rock Park, whether it was their first date, or they saw deer and wildlife, they swam in the pond when there was water in the pond, went for a walk, or sledded down the slope, or something else. If this commercialization is approved, you will no longer be able to sit on the rock, meditate, and appreciate the view without hearing the 24/7 noise of air conditioning equipment or generators running, or the snapping of enormous flags that will come along with this breach of nature. You talk about scale, think about Dick Edward Chevrolet on I-70 and the size of that flag. And that pole isn't as tall as this poles are going to be. At 140 feet tall, they are within 15 feet of being as tall as United Life Building. United Life Building's 155 feet tall. So when you drive down I and take a look at the United Building and think, you know, to the bottom of that first window, that's about how tall those poles will be, at 140 feet. And they say that they're going to be up to some different, but you can be sure that the providers are going to want, they're going to want to include in their lease agreement the maximum that they can do, because they don't know where technology's going to go. They're going to ask for more, as opposed to less. Servicing the equipment within the poles require the constant placement of large cranes and support equipment. You saw where the interior of the poles slide out to the top. Well, how do you get to that? We have to have a crane do that. So every time those poles are serviced, you're going to see a crane on top of Indian Rock Park, a big crane, lifting the guts out of those poles for servicing. If you allow these towers to be built, the natural beauty will be gone forever. Once you open the gates to commercialization of our public lands and parks for money, because that's what we're talking about here, you will never, ever be able to say no again. What's to say that Budweiser doesn't want to do park benches up at the park, and they want to advertise their product because of potential revenue? Please do not allow commercialization of this historical park, the tallest and most beautiful view of Salina. And just for an example of scale, this room, I just counted the ceiling tiles, is 48 by 48. So if you look at this room, this is the size of compound you're going to be seeing, if approved. And again, I can't imagine they're going to settle for a little cabinet the size of this podium, when they don't know where technology's going. They're not going to enter into a long-term lease for the size of this. And they all have air conditioners, and they all run 24/7. And they all have backup generators, which require fuel trucks and fuel tanks, and all of that kind of thing. If you look at the slope of the building, we were up there the other day, and there is a natural downslope to the south and east of the existing lodge. What, how tall is that retaining wall going to be on the bottom end of that slope? Because they're going to have to have a level pad to build on. So from the direct, from the grade that goes down, you're going to see a pretty tall retaining wall in order to provide a level pad for them to set their equipment on. That's all I'd say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Medina? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Calp. I've been a lifelong resident of Salina, but I've lived the last 20 years directly across the street from Indian Rock. It's literally my front yard. Over the years, I've seen firsthand what a beautiful and peaceful place it is. I know how lucky we are to have a place that is so close to nature. There's no place in Salina that is so peaceful and still untouched by technology, that people can go to watch the sunrise or to see the beautiful sun as it sets over our city. Every day, I see how much this beautiful little park is enjoyed. There are picnics, bird watching, hiking, fishing, sledding, walkers, stargazing, field trips from the schools for exploration, football games, frisbee disc golf, and so many other activities that people go there to enjoy. Have you ever seen the field of sunflowers and natural prairie grass as the sun's rising over Salina? Or sat at the top and watched fireworks on the evening of the Fourth of July spread across the horizon? It's a sight you will never forget. Indian Rock is an important part of the city's history. It's a site of a documented battle, an Indian battle that resulted in Salina being settled here. If not for the battle, Mr. Campbell, a Salina founder, stated he would not have settled here. Salina would have been founded northeast, closer to Manhattan. The history of Indian Rock is told through the artifacts and the documentation that the museum has displayed in their exhibits. Arrowheads and other little pieces of history are still to this day being discovered there. It's a sacred and vital piece of Salina's history. Men, women, and children are documented at the museum through their paperwork and their artifacts as being buried there, as a result of their fight to keep this land, which resulted in our city today. It's untouched a natural environment that even the Kansas Historical Society recognizes on their webpage, brings so much peace in a world that's so unsettled right now. It's a sanctuary for wildlife such as deer, foxes, herring, a variety of birds, and many other beautiful things, as well as our citizens. It should be preserved. I understand the need, or our need, for advancing technology, and that Salina must continue to advance into tomorrow, but I also understand the need to preserve our history for the future. This is just a small, but very special, little piece of land that holds such a huge piece of importance. We were told at the information meeting that there is no guarantee that the revenue from these towers would be used to build this lodge or make improvements. Please do not desecrate it with construction for technology that could be ongoing for 15 years or more. Do not destroy this little sanctuary of nature and history, because once it is gone, we can't get it back. I ask that you please consider what has been said here today with your hearts, not the wallets. I ask that you do not vote to destroy this small but important piece of our history. Even a website for the city of Salina states Indian Rock Park is a unique park. It's the most unique park. Let's keep technology out of it. At the very least, table this decision today for further consideration and look at other possibilities. Perhaps along the dike, you could create a memorial to our fallen soldiers. There's so many other possibilities, and technology is advancing every day. How long before these towers are obsolete? I, for one, would volunteer to help find an alternate solution. I'm not ready to let this happen. Once it starts, it opens the doors for more, and soon it'll be destroyed, gone forever. Please look at Indian Rock for what it is and not what it can buy, and let's keep it the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Jacqueline? Thank you.
I'm Lucille Sanderson, and I'm going to break away from what you're speaking about here, because for the last hour and a half, I have sat here and been very upset. How many veterans are in this room? None, but there stands your flag. And I understand it's not the bylaws to pledge allegiance to the flag. But yet, if our veterans didn't get out and fight, you might not be having this type of a meeting. I'm not saying anything about the tower. I'm just saying, our veterans allowed you to have this type of a meeting, and there's the flag. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the commission on this issue?
Todd McHale's 202 Millview. I am within the affected zone. I guess a couple of points. My wife would want to be here, but couldn't. First and foremost, I don't know why we keep referring to it as a flagpole. It's an-- It's an antenna. We can utilize it as a flagpole, you can do whatever. An antenna's an antenna, a flagpole's a flagpole. I used my phone to go online during the meeting and found, I may have a couple of points here, but the first recommended, recommended size of a flag for a 100-foot pole is 15 by 25. Okay? So 140 foot, do it proportionally, you can take yourself up. You're probably getting to that 20 by 30 range. I'm not an engineer, but I would think that the structural stress is put on a pole 140 foot in the air with the wind gusts that are available up there on any kind of a flag that size is to require a base on a flagpole that's a heck of a lot more than a 24-inch circumference. I'm just going to go with my gut instinct on that. Secondly, we went through the standards of evaluation. This particular project conflicts with multiple standards of evaluation. So, I mean, to me, it's, there seems to be a lot of things going on here that are wrong that just don't seem to jive. The next thing is the FTC concerns. To me, I think the concern for me would be legally, if we don't grant anyone the permission to go ahead and file and do their tower and do all this stuff, you don't open yourself up. It's not discrimination if you exclude everyone from doing it. However, if we open the parks up or open this park up to put these towers in, and all of a sudden somebody else comes along and wants to do something in another park, who are we or how are we going to regulate that we don't get ourselves in trouble with that kind of a situation? I mean, I'm totally against it, but I'm saying, if you do go forth, you're opening up Pandora's box on lawsuits. If you're concerned with FTC regulations as they pertain to discrimination, you aren't discriminating until you allow someone to do it, and then you restrict from someone else from doing it. So I come along, I want to put a, I want to put a cell tower in Oakdale Park. Why can't I do it there? There's no public, I mean, I'm not impeding upon any right of ways or anything like that. So another concern of mine. And then lastly, we talked about how revenue isn't the primary concern, which I guess to me means that we're concerned with Verizon having the adequate capacity to service their customers. At what point do they get the benefit of the doubt as it comes up with, you know, you're talking about market restrictions. A lot of you guys are in business for yourselves, as am I. Market restriction's a fact of life. It's not the city's function to try to make life easier for Verizon. Trust me, if they start dropping calls and dropping customers, they will spend the money to utilize and find a different space. I'm certain there is always a price point, there is always a tipping point, there are options out there. And I guess what really breaks my heart as we talk about how they, when you start taking a look at this, is we really have no idea, we have wonderful artistic representations of a possible outbuilding with the possible revenue of this, of which we don't even know what the revenue is, but we don't know what the dimensions of flagpole are, we don't know what the dimensions of flags are, we don't know how we're going to light the thing. Yeah, we don't know, there may be some caveats on who's going to service it, and we'll write that into the agreement. We have all these little things, all these little nuances that we haven't covered, and we're looking, we're looking to step forward and go ahead and approve this project. I guess for me, it's, I probably didn't come across very well and very clearly, first time I've ever done this, but to me, it just seems like we have a lot of hindrances in this, and it's just not very well thought out. So that's pretty much what I have to say. Thank you.
Hello, commissioners. My name is John Blanchard. I live at 1117 State Street. And I'd just kind of like to follow up on some of the comments made earlier, because they were really, I think, eloquent comments about really what a treasure we have at Indian Rock Park. And also to speak to maybe some land use issues on this as well. I think if you were a landscape architect, park planner, and you were given a charge to go out and design a park, I think if you were able to do something and accomplish that design and had comments like were given earlier about how that property is received and enjoyed by the public, I think you would have to consider yourself as a designer very successful in completing that task. And so having said that, I would just maybe suggest to you, and since this is what I understand to be kind of just sort of a feeling-out stage of whether this is a good idea or not, I would suggest that it's, it's not a very good idea at all. The use is completely incompatible with the space. It's a very unique space. I think that they can find other places for that type of intense use. The other thing is, is that, you know, Frank Lloyd Wright designed homes in the prairie style. And the reason he did is that he wanted his architecture to reflect the landscape. And so when you look at, we're in the prairie, we're flat, and to see just three poles shooting out of our high spot, I think, to put it just bluntly, that looks ridiculous, and it looks like it's not very well thought out. And if you were to plant, start planting a park and have that in your original design, I don't think that your park design would go very far, and I don't think it would have been originally approved. So I would hope that if this is just a stage one of feeling it out and saying, is this a good idea? I would hope that you would determine that it's not a good idea and maybe just, let's start looking for another site. Now, having said that, I know you've asked a few other people for a site, and I, I have a site that, I don't know if it's been considered or not. There is a parcel of land that's just east of Metal Arc School, and I believe it's owned by the school district. And I've seen that it's come up for sale several times, and it looks like an unbuildable lot for a home. And so I don't know if you know Commissioner Kennedy, the lot I'm speaking about, but I don't know if that's been explored, and if it hasn't, that maybe that might be a use that not only would be usable, but that maybe the school district can then get some income off of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, and we like positive suggestions. Anyone else like to address the commission?
Alga with 157 Channel Road. I suggested the other day at the meeting that they put it on water tower, and they said there was an ordinance against it. I'd like to know when it took effect, because this paint will look like it's dry on all of these cables and stuff running down from there. I took these this afternoon. There's 1, 2, 3 towers up there now, and there must be, oh, 16 cables. There must be a lot of cell phones up there. They're pretty well spaced apart, so I don't know why we couldn't put them up on the water tower.
Those might be public communication.
Those are not private, those are not private cell tower antennas. Those are public safety antennas used by the city's public safety divisions. And also by the water department for their communication.
If it could support them, surely it could support three more antennas. Look at the cable box here.
It is not, it's not a question of the structural strength or integrity of the water tower. It is the current policy about the private use of a public water tower.
Why can't be changed?
As I mentioned previously in the meeting, either citizens or planning commission can make that as a suggested recommendation. Ultimately, it will be the city commission that will decide how our city water towers are used.
There's just got to be a better location of the park. That's all there is to it. I mean, simply.
Are there others? Please come. Once I close the public comment section, you won't have any more time to comment. Anyone else? If there's no one else, then we'll close the public comment section, and we'll bring this back to the commission for consideration. Gentlemen, do you have any further comments or comments?
Yeah, I certainly pay attention to what's been said, and I, I understand the concern in our society of towers, I really do. But I also understand the concern that we have in a community. I, for one, don't like electric transmission poles. I've never liked them. And they run up and down the streets throughout your community, but I like the other option left, which is no electricity. And so many of us have become so reliant upon cell phones. I don't know that we can learn to live without the towers, and I know they have to have them in certain locations. Hopefully, a day will come when they can transmit data with low towers or basically hidden towers that are on existing light poles, but that's not the case today. We have so many things in our community that stick up in the air. In fact, by law, I looked down my street, which is Martin Street, to the east, and that's the first time I ever noticed I could see the big cell tower that's out on Markley, on the Markley Sports Complex on Markley Road. That's the first time I've ever seen it from my street. It's been there since I've been here, and I didn't notice it. We're getting used to these, and I do think that in time, I think these will not be noticed. I, for one, spend some time on Indian Rock Park. It's, I work close to there. It's an easy place to go up and have lunch sometimes when you want to relax. I don't think the towers are going to disrupt that view in any way, shape, or form. I wish, again, they didn't have to have them, but frankly, do, I think that the other issue that was mentioned, and Mr. Blanchard appreciates your comment about that property, the district does own some property that is up for sale big right now, but the setbacks are really a consideration. And most of our property, unless it's large parcels, doesn't have the required setbacks. And I don't think many residents want a tower that could possibly come down on their house, so the setback is a real consideration. You have to have enough feet for the proper buildings, and that particular parcel does not. So with that being said, I'm going to say I wish for other options, and I certainly understand the community's concerns, but I'm, I think there's some possibilities there. It's a space that could be used for that, and I would be of support of it.
I appreciate Mr. Kennedy's comments, and I guess I would weigh in on the other side of that conversation. I too enjoy Indian Rock Park. It's a favorite place for us to meet, and I run and bike up there quite often. And I like the fact that at 6:00 in the morning, when I'm done at the top of the hill, the only thing I hear is my own when I'm done. That being said, I think that this isn't the first time we've had applications come before the commission for cell towers, and it seems like there's always a sense of urgency on the, on the part of the carriers to, for us to act and to do something right away. And I, and I don't think that we've researched all the alternatives to this, and I think that there are a lot of other possibilities, and I think that there is more technology coming around. And I would hate to see us make a, you know, 10, 15, even 20-year commitment to doing this and destroy something that's really a natural, perfect place right now.
I'm going to second most of what you're saying there, that the successful business model for these cell companies is going to be dependent upon them finding alternate locations. They can't afford to have calls drop. They're going to do the research, they're going to find places for this, and I don't believe that this is, this is the correct location. I do appreciate the earlier comments geared towards the patriotism and having a flag, but I don't think for a second that if this was a flagpole only, if it stated earlier, not an antenna, at a different height, that also did not come along with generators and other structures that were dependent upon having that thing there, I don't think for a second that this, the discussion would be, I don't think you'd have the opposition at all. I think everybody's patriotic in that sense, and would probably very much support something that is smaller, that doesn't take a generator, and doesn't take 140 feet to be able to be successful. So on one hand, I'm very much in line with that comment, and I would enjoy seeing something to honor veterans, but, but this is something entirely different, and I don't, I don't think that this is the right location. I would encourage us to explore other locations.
I would also, on the side of that, before I came this evening, I was fully prepared. Somebody said, would you want that in your backyard? And you know what? I'd love, you put that flagpole in my backyard, I'd love it, wouldn't bother me to look at it. But after hearing, I was also concerned that I brought, on the compound sign, and the flagpole doesn't really bother me, although then Mr. McHale's brought up the perspective, and then Mr. Medina bringing up the generators running, and I too had ran up that hill early in the morning, well, halfway, I walked the rest, but I can't imagine there's no way that the generator's kicking on. I just never really thought of that, so I really appreciate this process of going through that. And again, I appreciate the public Parks and Rec Department of just saying, you know, I feel like we're going after you of saying this, but it's forward-thinking. Look, as a business guy, I'm getting all these calls, and I'm trying to solve the issue for Salina, and this was just a proposal, and wherever it goes from there. So I do appreciate you bringing that up front there. I don't want you to think that we're attacking, or that, obviously, I gave a new respect for the park as well and what everybody thinks about it, and I never really gave it that much thought of how special that park is. So again, I would, I'm going to be in a motion of denying it, only that we look into different places I think that we could probably put this. But I do appreciate the forward-thinking of the, of the Parks and Rec Department of saying, how do we handle all of the phone calls that we are getting? And now we know either which way, whether this is a viable place or it isn't a viable place for it.
Well, I wanted to second Mr. Blanchard's eloquence. It seems to me that the legal reservations that Todd McHale's brought, the aesthetic considerations that Bill Medina brought, and not to shorten any of the other people presented, but I do think that, I very much appreciate the process, and I, Mr. Blanchard, I appreciate the work you put in putting this together. I appreciate the forward-thinking, and the fact that we have a democratic process here that really can speak to the people. It looks to me as though, at its most extreme terms, we have an issue of degradation of service or desecration of a site. And my choice is to not desecrate the site and see if we can do something else with that degradation of the service.
Right, I'm ready for the motion. We do want to hear if our new youth member has any, any questions or any observations from youth perspective. So he's got that microphone in front of him, so.
I've been listening very carefully what you guys got to say, and I do feel that there could be an alternate location, because like most of the people have said, the park is pretty historically significant, so that's just how I feel.
Thank you. Is there a motion on this item?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. My, my family had the privilege of living at Corner Channel Drive in Glen for 16 years and watching the sunset over Indian Rock every night, and I agree especially with the eloquent comments from Ms. Calp, that it's the best natural landmark in town and should not be desecrated with unnecessary technological equipment. I think we do need to look toward East Crawford, the municipal golf course, possible change in the ordinance concerning our existing water towers, and even seeing about changing the state law and allowing such towers in cemeteries where most of the residents aren't putting to mind. So I would move that Special Planet Application 12-1 be denied.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No?
No.
Do we need a show of hands? Could we have a show of hands for?
All those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand for Crystal. And those opposed to the motion to deny?
Do we need findings of fact about why we are?
What, what we would like, if we could focus back in on trying to tie that back to the factors on page six there. I think what has been generalized there could be summarized in item four there, that the Mr. Perney and those in support of that motion find that, that the plan would have adverse visual and environmental effects. I think the other factor that comes into play would be potentially number 10, which would be an impact on what I think some are perceiving as, as a landmark. But that, that would be for Mr. Perney to elaborate in his motion which, which of those he thinks supports the denial of his, of this request.
Well, again, I would say that the worst impact is that it's a, it's a negative impact on, on an important natural landmark in the community, which is basically item number four in the evaluation standards, and also a historic location regarding actually the history of our city. And also the, the plan by, and I can't remember the years, but this park was identified years and years ago, it's a potential major city park. The street pattern or the road pattern, the non-street, even park roadways, I believe still date to the design of a native.
still date to the design of a native landscape architect, Mr. Alfred Glucklitz, of our community. So the roadways alone are hidden for it.
Is it inappropriate for me to be able to make a suggestion for one of the other points?
Sure.
It would seem to me that-
If you can get Mr. Perney to agree with you.
Absolutely, I agree. Number eight, I think, is applicable, the scale and facility relations surrounding land uses, I think is something that needs to be considered as well.
So Mr. Perney, his motion has cited factors four, and eight, and ten as the basis for recommending denial. Is Mr. Welsh in agreement with those three as reasons?
Mr. Michael?
Yes, I am in agreement.
So that will be reported as the basis for your denial recommendation. And this recommendation will go to the City Commission, but this, this meeting was important from the standpoint that either planning staff or anybody in Parks and Recreation had any standing to tell these providers no, or have any basis to say, this is not an appropriate location, until the public had a chance to weigh in. We are not the decision makers, you are, so that, that is only helpful because if Indian Rock is off limits, then they know they have to seek alternate locations.
Thank you very much. Those in attendance that were interested in this issue, thank you very much. We'll move on to item number four. Application PDD 12-2, 2A, filed by Ken Ostrander, a change in zoning district classification for a PDD planned development district.
We're going to let the room clear here, and we'll see if Mr. Ostrander is present. One of our planning commission requirements is that in order for the planning commission to take action on an item, the applicant or a representative must be present to answer questions, and so Dustin is, he was here at the start of the meeting, but we're confirming whether he is still present or not, and if he's not present, then we'll have to skip that item.
So we're making a move in the agenda for it? Just maybe went to the restroom or something?
No, no, it was earlier in the meeting. I don't, did Mr. Hurst go out the door, or I asked him to confirm-
Yeah.
-Mr. Ostrander's presence or absence. So I, if we could just wait briefly till Dustin returns, and he can report back to us.
I have a question then, in the meantime, so just to go with, with what you were saying earlier, a suggestion as far as potentially reviewing some, opening up some additional areas, water towers, and some places that have been forbidden in the past.
I was going to hit that as well. What would be the next step in that process?
The appropriate thing is when we get to the end of the meeting, and there are other matters on the agenda, and the planning commission wanted to go on record in that regard in some way, that would be the appropriate time for somebody to bring that up. And so if the planning commission wanted to go on record, what their position is in regards to the use of water towers, that would be the appropriate time to do that.
Well, for one, I don't think that I've heard enough about that. I don't know. Structurally, I believe that that water tower is probably built at least fifty percent larger than, than whatever environmental impact could have when, whatever, to hold a structure like that. And I don't know what a, an antenna weighs, I don't know any of that stuff, but it just seems like you've got something tall, you've got something with a fence around it, it would be a perfect place to plant the stuff that you need to have a cell phone.
My thought is that- Here is, here is what we were given to understand during the previous public hearing item. I believe Mr. Ostrander reported back that he was concerned that many of his neighbors and neighboring property owners were in opposition to his request, and it is our belief that he left the meeting. So my suggestion would be that this item, the public hearing, be continued over to your meeting on October second, and that if in the interim, Mr. Ostrander withdraws his application, then we will report that back. But you, you cannot take any action, nor would we give a report or anything on this item without his presence being here. In the meantime, if he wants to withdraw his application, he may.
I'd make a motion that we move the, that item to the next, PDD 12-2 slash 2A, to the next meeting.
With, with that being said, it would be up to the Chair and the Commission whether you want to, I would be hesitant to have any comments from the neighbors, only from the standpoint that Mr. Ostrander's not here to explain his application. But as long as everybody who's in the room interested in that application understood that it would be carried over to October second, that would be the appropriate action.
So the motion is to continue this? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Excuse myself.
And those who were present for that application, I'm sorry that didn't move along. Item number five, application P 12 1A, filed by Mr. Todd Welsh, and Todd wants to remove himself. There we go. Requesting a final plat on the proposed twenty-seven lot residential subdivision, Pheasant Ridge, addition number two.
I think you're all familiar with this application from the application that was heard on a preliminary plat and the initial zoning, but the location of our property in question is directly east of Presbyterian Manor, and north of what is today the Pheasant Ridge Edition, which we reported to you in your packet, that that original plat of Pheasant Ridge Edition was done in nineteen ninety-two, and the property has developed since that time. And back in June, you approved a preliminary plat, and you had some homework items for the applicant and his design engineer, and those are highlighted for you on the top of page three. And those homework items were obtaining agreement from Presbyterian Manor to cooperate and participate in the extension of the north-south drainage channel by relocating their fence and granting a drainage easement, obtaining a letter from the city engineer approving all aspects of the stormwater collection system, and obtaining a letter from the city engineer, director of utilities, approving the preliminary design plans for subdivision infrastructure. And we do have representatives of the engineering department here to address the latter two. And John, if you could go to the photographs, they're at the end, end slides. This is the ditch that is north of East Crawford. Off into the left of the picture here is Presbyterian Manor. This is the, the common lot line here runs somewhere along the edge of this ditch. So that fence there is located inside the property line. So this, this is the fence, however Presbyterian Manor's property line is actually on the other side of this utility easement. So this portion of the ditch is essentially partially on Presbyterian Manor property and partially in Pheasant Ridge property. If you could go to the next one, John. I believe we're, we're working our way north, and it's difficult to see because of these trees that will have to be removed. This is the sewer pump station and equipment building that goes with it, that would be relocated from here up to the northeast corner of this subdivision at Prairie Lane and near the intersection of Brookwood Lane.
Is that a cell phone tower in front of that pump station?
Uh, no, it's a little receiver that the pump station picks up signals with. This, well, you may have to go back one, John. You can't see this very well, but this fence runs along this alignment, and then it angles at forty-five degrees behind this tree, and then runs up what would be the path of the ditch. So in, in order to extend, and so this fence is essentially on the property line, and this fence, in order to extend that ditch, has to be taken and moved back, so then in the future, the fence would run right along the edge of the twenty-foot utility easement, and that would allow for this ditch to continue on all the way to Brookwood. So we have received confirmation from Presbyterian Manor that they are agreeable to that. They are agreeable to taking the existing twenty-foot utility easement is there and converting that to a actual utility and drainage easement, and that will allow the ditch, as it's currently designed, to follow the same path, and essentially would be straddling the common property line there. So the total width of easement for the ditch is on the order of forty-five feet, and twenty-five of that would be on Pheasant Ridge side and twenty feet on the Presbyterian Manor side. So this is a drawing that I furnished, and it is, it's difficult to see, but there's a fence line, and then right at this point, right there, it angles at forty-five degrees, and then it comes here, and that is right in the path of the ditch. So this fence line would just continue on the edge of this easement line, and then this would be available for both utilities and drainage. Now, it's an important thing to know at this point, because if they were not agreeable to cooperate and participate in that regard, the ditch would have to be redesigned in such a way that it was entirely on Mr. Welsh's property. When we get to the end of the presentation, we'll have the engineers report back to you on items two and three there. But this is a seven-point-two-six acre site, there's twenty-seven proposed lots. The street access would be continuation of Quail Hollow Drive here, Prairie Lane, which is the dead ends right here, would extend to, and probably be built to here, and then right-of-way is provided for Brookwood, but only for half the street, and so provision has been made for the extension of Brookwood, but that would be something that takes place at a later time. One of the things that's important and not clearly delineated on the plat drawing is the fact that presently, the ditch ends right here, and from that point, historically, the water has meandered across here in its own channel, and there is a swath of floodplain right through here. And so one of the things that'll have to be done is work with our engineers, Mr. Earls, on Mr. Welsh's behalf, and one thing we pointed out there is that the Army Corps of Engineers' office in Tulsa has helped other property owners and developers in Salina with the calculation of base flood elevations where they're not identified on a map. So we have a general idea, but it will become important to pin down what the actual base flood elevation is for this area, and then the goal would be that instead of having the hundred-year flood event meander through here, that it would be confined to this channel, and that that would be demonstrated, and then FEMA would remove the entire subdivision of the lots from the floodplain by letter. That, that would be a follow-up item for this. As far as the public utility extensions, there would be extensions of lines here and here, and a loop tying back in Brookwood to an existing line there. The tent, the pump station that you saw in that photograph would be relocated to approximately here, and so the sewage discharge would come down to this pump station, and it would be pumped back west along Brookwood to a storm sewer, or a sanitary sewer and a manhole at Estates Drive in Brookwood. I'll let the engineering department address the, the stormwater detention in more detail. Natural gas would be extended here from the surrounding area. As far as electricity, because of the ditch back here, West Star would locate their service in the front area here, so these lots would all have electric service from the back. These would have electric service from the back, but over here, the, the actual this would continue to this loop, so that there would be underground electric in the front here with the associated little green boxes that go with it. So on Quail Hollow Drive, there'd be a sixty-foot right-of-way, and then a seventy-foot utility corridor with West Star located behind the right-of-way. You're familiar with station number four there at Marymount and Crawford, which would provide emergency response. One thing that was looked at is, when this is fully developed, the only means of exit will still be down to Crawford, but at some point in time, Brookwood will be extended, and that will provide an alternate way into the subdivision. I think we've correctly identified that this would be Metalark, Lakewood, and Central High enrollment areas, and it is in a park service area, and so there would be a two-hundred-dollar fee collected at each building permit that would go to the park fund. Just one oddity that will require careful alignment and matching up, but for some historical reason, the right-of-way over here on Presbyterian Manor is twenty-one point six-eight feet south of the section, or quarter section line there, and on this property, it's thirty feet, so if you centered the road in the right-of-way, the road would have jobs in it, so they'll have to be careful to make sure that the design and everything matches up, because the right-of-ways do not, but it, it makes the most sense. Almost all of our streets have a thirty and thirty arrangement for sixty, but for some reason, on the other side, it's, it's twenty-one and thirty-nine feet instead of thirty and thirty. So in terms of the infrastructure, we'll have public streets, public sidewalks, a public drainage system, and public utilities for both wastewater and water, and Mr. Nelson can amplify on this, but it's our understanding that except for some unplatted property here on the east side of Prairie Lane, there should be no special assessment costs that would impact anybody outside of this subdivision, except for the east side of Prairie Lane. And was shared with you before, there are grant funds that will be utilized to pay down the cost of some of the utility extensions for this subdivision. One thing that the applicant would, maybe request him to respond to or explain is whether there would be any sort of private covenants that would be used to dictate type of size of homes, or other building restrictions, or other design, if, if those intended to be addressed through private covenants. But we believe the plat layout itself is in order. We've identified the three items of concern, which is approval from Presbyterian Manor of the fence relocation and granting the easement, and having something from the engineering department that says they are satisfied with the all aspects of the public drainage system that are proposed. And if after hearing from the applicant and his design engineer and the city's engineer you're comfortable approving this plat, we've recommended, I believe it is, eight conditions of approval there. of approval there on page seven and eight. And item two there is important to get the current mapped floodplain identified on the plat. And the reason that it is important that the engineering department has approved the infrastructure plans is that we, the plat is the instrument by which easements are provided in the right places for the right utilities and right drainage systems. And one of the reasons we want something in writing from the city engineers so that we know that the easements that are depicted on the plat and the right-of-way on the plat match up with the infrastructure plans for what is going to serve this subdivision. So, with that, I'd be happy to address any questions that you have about this application. And if you do not have any questions, we would want to hear from the city engineering department about the stormwater collection system and infrastructure plans.
Any questions, Dean?
I'd say one if I may. Dean, I'm interested in the floodplain issue because we've denied some other applications that have been in floodplains. These conditions, if you would listen, would ensure the fact that the floodplain formerly addressed and in fact moved out of that area before development started. Is that correct?
Well, if it's not moved, the one thing that is unique particularly to this subdivision is that it's our understanding, none of these homes would have basements. So, you can build a home without a basement in a floodplain. It's the basement that's prohibited, not the home. But if you build a home in the floodplain, then the home has to be elevated. And one of the things we don't have pinned down yet is what that elevation needs to be because to do that, you have to have a hundred-year flood elevation.
Well, I understand it, but if you go downstream and elevate properties, what you do is basically back the problem upstream. And so, then, I'm concerned about the properties that are already built which lie south of that development. If you start elevating properties, fall to floodplain with more fill, then you're going to back some water up likely. So, that'll all be addressed, that'll all be the score.
Mr. Earls is going to have to demonstrate that that water that currently goes across here can be confined to here and that this will be, the top of bank of that ditch will be sufficient that no water that formerly went here will do that, that it will all be confined there.
And these conditions are drawn?
That those conditions are designed to address that.
Thank you.
So, the volume of water that would have once flowed through the floodplain area, that would all, that drains would be able to handle that full volume?
Right.
Right. What is meandering through today, and I don't know what you have in larger areas, John, maybe the vicinity map, or maybe we don't have anything big enough. But the, this is the Salina East Crawford Recreation here, area here. And if you're familiar with that, when you turn on Markley Road, you are essentially going uphill as you go to the south. All the water that comes out of the runway area and the East Crawford Recreation area comes through here and then it goes in that ditch that we showed you photographs of. Mr. Earls is going to have to take that and he's going to have to extend this ditch here to accommodate runoff that's going here and today is doing this. And it's going to have to be reconfined to there. And then, there'll be some structures here that will detain or slow down that collected runoff before it's discharged onto the north. So, this might be appropriate time for Mr. Nelson or someone in engineering to explain their review and conclusions about the storm drainage system.
Mr. Nelson?
The city engineering department has reviewed the drainage report submitted by Mr. Earls and Mr. Welsh. In fact, we were meeting as late as four o'clock today on some revisions. But let me start first with the infrastructure plans. We have reviewed the plans and would say that the preliminary design plans for this subdivision are in general compliance with accepted design standards and that the placement of water, sanitary sewer, streets, and stormwater will fit into the proposed right-of-way and proposed utility and drainage easements. So, we have no problems with the infrastructure fitting into the plat documents. In regard to the stormwater system, certainly, as Mr. Andrew has pointed out, there's a large, two watersheds actually coming in through this parcel. One directly from the south, which is about ninety acres or so, and certainly channeling through that same drainage ditch that runs along the west side of, between Presbyterian Manor and Pheasant Ridge Number One and the discharging into the proposed Pheasant Ridge Number Two addition where it kind of meanders in and out. And then, there is also a second watershed that is about thirty acres inside that comes off from the east side and directs its runoff onto Prairie Lane, mostly from the church property at the top of the hill. And at this point, that discharges behind, actually at the end of the current location of Prairie Lane and meanders across the property and actually discharges into the Overland Ventures property on the north side of what would be Brookwood. And actually, it discharges several hundred yards east of where the west ditch discharges. So, they're discharging at two separate points. Looking at the information provided by Mr. Earls, the twenty-five-year, twenty-four-hour storm currently is producing six-point-seven cubic feet per second of runoff under the development. The, this property is estimated to bring nineteen-point-nine, just under twenty, cubic feet per second off of the property. Mr. Earls has designed a detention pond based on these figures. And I would also note that the extension of the drainage ditch coming along the west side of the Pheasant Ridge Number Two addition is designed to carry not only the twenty-five-year storm and what's coming through there now, but it will also handle the hundred-year storm, which is quite a bit more than what the design criteria requires. We did have some questions about the original proposal with the, how the storm system was being designed. It was utilizing some open swales and some open ditches. We've met with Mr. Earls and we've talked about getting that back into compliance with the drainage criteria, which would have an enclosed pipe system. And I believe we've come to an agreement and a good solution, actually a better solution than what we had before, with a pipe system that will not only benefit the properties here in the subdivision, but will also be a better design for the ultimate build-out of Brookwood, making the design much more reasonable and easier to facilitate in the future. So, at this point, would stand for any questions that you might have?
If we were to point up there on the plat as to where these, is the pipeline system, that still utilizes this easement here or are we looking at a pipeline up here parallel to Brookwood?
If I might borrow your point. The system that was proposed was, had a open swale running along the backside of these properties here at the north end. And then, we had surface drainage coming down and collecting here and then there was surface drainage coming down to a concrete-lined channel here that was discharging into the extension of the drainage ditch. After a meeting with Mr. Earls this afternoon, we've come to a different conclusion that would set up with a couple of inlets here, a couple of inlets here, and bring it back into the detention pond, which will set back up here in the northwest corner of the addition. And then, we would have a couple of inlets here that would pipe into the ditch here. What we would do then, we would eliminate the need for this drainage easement that's running between these particular lots and that can only mean good things for the residents because a drainage easement is the most restrictive use easement that we have on the properties. So, along with the addition of the inlets here and here and tying them together, we're not only eliminating this easement across here, but we would also be intercepting the rain runoff coming down Prairie Lane, essentially from the church property, and actually channeling it back into the detention pond. So, we're actually capturing more water than what we worked for.
I have a question for you. I noticed the texture of the existing drainage ditch, does that serve some purpose, the texture of the concrete on there?
Well, I don't, I wasn't here when that was installed. Mr. Mike, so Mr. Andrew was.
I don't think it's intended to be art or aesthetic purposes.
I like it better than Salina does.
The design for the proposed, the extension of the ditch would be concrete-lined and it would not be this pillow.
But didn't slow the water down or any effect?
Well, certainly, the roughness coefficient on that type of channel is going to be higher so that you would get less efficient flow of water through there.
Just one. Any other questions for Mr. Nelson? Thank you very much. Shall we hear from the applicant?
The primary question the staff had was just whether he was planning in the way of any private restrictive covenants or building covenants.
Todd Welsh, two-twenty-one South Morris Drive. And to, I'll keep it short and then I'll let my engineer, Peter Earls, speak mostly of that because he has all the answers. I was improving to the four o'clock meeting that they met at for being other obligations. It sounds like they got resolved. The restricted covenants, as I said before in the last meeting, this will be my second development in doing and I have learned several things in doing the other one that I think will improve this one. I did not have restricted covenants on the last development and the restricted covenants that we're looking at currently would be pretty close to something around Magnolia Hills Estates. It doesn't allow any camper storage, no parking of boats or anything in the driveways. Anything that will be stored will be on the side of the garage on a pate and be screened by a six-foot either privacy and/or vinyl fence. There will be no chain link fence allowed in here, but we will have a six-foot privacy fence and/or vinyl if somebody chooses to do that. Any exterior buildings that are done can be no larger than a two-car garage for exterior and must be built in the same quality with the same material as the house would be. So, there'll be no metal Morton buildings that would be available or any metal sheds of that state. Speaking of metal sheds, there'll be no storage sheds. Small ten-by-tens or ten-by-twelves shall be in wood. There'll be no metal sheds per se to be there. These are just things that I am trying to help in the development of the area, of the needs of the other residents that are in that area, trying to protect what they've built in a neighborhood setting. To recap a little bit on this particular one, I don't believe, and I hope we see it in the future, but I don't believe we'll see another development like this for a while, meaning without the help of Dennis Law with the Chamber of Commerce and some congressmen and city staff, we're hoping to build a moderately priced home. That's why there'll be slab-on-grade, moderately priced home for recruiting new people into the community, known also as workforce housing, meaning that they could move in from outside areas and be able to afford a home right-of-way. There will not be any rentals. They must be single-family owned up for one year after purchasing that particular property. They cannot be used for any type of rental or investment. So, it has to be single-family owner occupied to be there. So, the restricted covenants will follow the final plat and so those will come. So, I just want to let you know that we're being really exclusive on how we're going to do this. The lots will not be sold off to other builders. I will be responsible for finishing out the entire project of twenty-seven homes, which should be around three and a half years to complete this project. The homes will be moderately priced, have been negotiated through receiving the funds of not to exceed a hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars the first year. And also, then, we've got a three percent in the contract with the city's lineup, not exceeding three percent over the next year until it finally goes in phases out from there. So, again, that's why I wanted to stress the type of development it is. I don't believe that you'll see anything to be able to be built in that price range in Salina for a while. With also special assessments, we've come to a custom of special assessments in around the area of excess of twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. And we're trying to cap these special assessments of anywhere from five to six to seven thousand dollars. So, again, we can help the people get into the homes and also live in a nice area. So, any other questions, I'd let Mr. Earls speak.
The eight points of staff recommendations, you don't have any problem with those?
I don't. I'm going to let Mr. Earls speak to those. I don't have any of those. As long as they've worked those out. I believe the only one I was responsible for that I could actually knew what I was doing was to speak to Presbyterian Manor and receive the agreement for us to have a drainage easement, which we have.
Some of these are already requirements, but they're just stated here as conditions to reinforce them. But among those, Mr. Welsh clearly understands he's responsible for installation of all the public improvements shown on the preliminary plat and Mr. Earls' plans. We will resolve the issue of the mapped A-zone and base flood elevations on the plat drawing or subsequently with the ditch design. Everyone needs to understand that all the utilities in the subdivision will be placed underground so that even though Pheasant Ridge Number One has above-ground utilities, this would have underground utilities. The sidewalks are required on both sides of Quail Hollow Drive and Prairie Lane. There would be a covenant put in place that if there's ever a benefit district created to extend Brookwood Lane, that this subdivision would not protest that. And number seven simply indicates a requirement that the certificate of completion, which is essentially an inspection and acceptance of all the streets, water, and sewer lines by the city engineer, has to occur before any building permits are issued in the subdivision. So, most of those are just reinforcing, both for the planning commission's benefit, just to reinforce so everybody understands what those requirements are.
And I would agree with those.
I wanted to say that I'm glad to see the two sidewalk requirement. I think that's a good deal regardless of whether it was required or not. And Mr. Welsh, one question about the, could you clarify me? I wasn't sure. When you were talking about rentals and single-family ownership, you mentioned a one-year, is there a one-year limitation on that? Well, I missed that.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and see exactly what my agreement is with the city, but we, and I don't recall right now what exactly we put in there. What we were getting away from was somebody, because they're moderately priced, of an investor coming in and buying up five or six units and they being just all rental properties. I'm not quite sure that, and I'd have to speak to my attorney, I'm not quite sure that I can put a stipulation on there that none of them ever be rental agreements. I think what we did was if somebody wanted to purchase the property, what I do want to do is put somebody in a unique situation where they purchase the property, they get transferred later, something happens to the residential economy, they have, they can't sell the property, so it sets their vacant. It's in the best interest of the community, I believe, and the neighborhood that if they were able to put that to use after a certain amount of time, that somebody could be renting it, mowing the yard, and maintaining the property. So, what we were trying to discourage was any individual investor coming in, purchasing them, and turning them into rental units. We figured if somebody were to purchase them after the first year and then resell them again. But I would have to, I'd have to go back and But I would have to, I'd have to go back and look at that again, exactly what city councilman we came up with on what was the best interest of that.
So is it a one-year restriction on turning it into a rental for any reason? Is, is that what I?
That's correct. Well, I believe it'd be like if you came to purchase the property, you'd have to be the single-family owner occupant of the property.
Right.
So you would have to actually move into it, put water, sewer into your name. After one year, 12 months from that, then you're free to do whatever you want to do with the property.
Thank you.
So we're just trying to discourage that from initially. I couldn't stop somebody coming in buying seven units and turning them into, and bringing them into a rental situation.
That helps clarify.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Question, Earl?
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Earls?
I'm Pete Earls with Earls Engineering Inspection. Basically, the, the plating and so on, everything will be on there. We do have actually shown the flood fringe and base flood elevation. We're working with the city staff, as they said, we met with them at four o'clock to iron out the last items on the drainage issues. The concrete ditch liner, the one you see currently is about eight feet wide, goes up at four-to-one side slopes. The final one, ours, where it joins us, will actually be 12 feet wide with four-to-one side slopes. The extra width, it just goes, again, the additional water coming down through there, we're wanting to keep it slowed down, not high velocity. The slope in that channel is about .35 percent. So it's basically .35 feet drop in 100 feet. So it's very minimal, again, to try to keep the velocities down. We aren't using the pillow design, it's actually very expensive. It will be a concrete lined, typical, as Wayne pointed out, this is a roughness coefficient of about .03, .035. A regular concrete is about .013. So it's actually, the biggest problem with something like this is exactly what you see on the end down there. It collects debris and pretty soon you get grass growing and everything else down in there and then it actually destroys your, what you're trying to gain. It'll actually destroy those little pillows and break them up. The, that's the main issue. We have run it by hand. We had some issues with how we're going to do the future Brookwood and that was our big discussion, trying to figure out how in the future we're going to build Brookwood across this channel. And that's what we worked out as far as how that would work with the pond in that corner. And so it's a little different layout so that in the future, Brookwood would be an easier construction and be able to tie into this subdivision as it will be finally laid out with that channel. So the channel will basically go right through. We'll have riprap at the end of that for obvious reasons, to prevent any erosion downstream. If you look at it, grade-wise, it just continues onto the north and eventually across this Country Club Estates, or Country Club Roads. The, I talked with the surveyor, which was Landmark Surveying. They have corrected everything on the plat that's requested. They have submitted the sectioned corner ties and he's going to set the block corners tomorrow. So that those things will all be taken care of as well.
Will there be a box covert under Brookwood then when it's constructed or how will the water get?
A little bit of box covert or multiple.
Tubes.
Tubes, correct.
If I may, I just, I sort of clarify, I think I understand that any design of drainage in such a fashion that in a hundred-year event, it will not make the situation worse for Pheasant Hill or Pheasant Ridge.
No, actually the water currently just loops through the subdivision and actually goes right back to where the end of this ditch is. And so the water comes down the channel currently about 100 CFS and just runs through this property and ends up in the same location. Now, we're putting in a pond, so we're actually discharging less water from this area than what discharges today because we're actually, we're allowed 6.6 CFS and we're actually only going to discharge about four. And what we're doing currently, the water off of the church runs straight down.
Prairie Lane.
Prairie Lane, thank you. And it's not hindered at all and it joins this wash area, which is current subdivision. Since we're putting in Prairie Lane and coming down, we're actually going to pick that flow up and get it over to the pond. And so we're actually accumulating more water in our pond than what we would really need to. But we're doing that to, again, prevent a lot of wash and so on, once we extend this roadway and create a, a problem down on the adjacent property owner's property and so.
And moving the flowgate from south as well.
Right. That's going through the channel. That's correct.
Other questions of Mr. Earls? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments from representatives of the applicant? We'll open this up to public comment. Is anybody from the public that would like to make remarks about this item? If being done done, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Gentlemen, further comments or motion?
I'd like to, so I think my question addressed about the flip lane issue and so I certainly support this and apparently Mr. Welsh is in agreement with the eight conditions as recommended by staff and so I would make a motion to improve application number nine A with the eight conditions as listed on page seven in eight of our packet.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That matter carries. Thank you all very much. Mr. Welsh, would you like to return? Item number six, the annual business meeting, election of officers. We have the, Dean, maybe you want to tell us how this should work, but we need a chairman, a vice chairman, a heritage commission member and a board of zoning appeals representative?
That is correct. And this is our first meeting in September. We have new members, Mr. Backson, Mr. Norland, Trent Brown and Justin Walker over here. So we are at full membership, but the first item of business is elect a chairman and vice chairman for the coming year. And one of the requirements to be chairman or vice chairman is you have to have served at least a year to be eligible. So Mr. Ryan has served one full term as chairman and he is eligible for another term. Mr. Birdsong, who has left the commission, was your vice chairman. So for both of those positions, everyone except for Mr. Backson and Mr. Norland are eligible to be nominated for that position. So in the order of things, I think the first order of business would be to consider nominations for the position of chairman. And when that's concluded, then the position of vice chairman and then we'll move on to the liaisons with the other boards and commissions.
Mr. Andrew, I'd like to nominate Carl Ryan as the chairman to serve another term.
Second.
And we have a motion in second to nominate Mr. Ryan. Are there any further nominations or is there any suggestion that nominations cease?
I'd make the Casti unanimous ballot for Mr. Ryan.
Okay. So by acclamation, Mr. Ryan is going to serve another term as chairman and I'll turn it back over to him and let him accept nominations for vice chairman. That, that position is open because Mr. Birdsong is no longer on the commission.
Are there nominations for vice chairman?
Mr. Welsh, indicating that Ryan serving in that capacity, I would make a motion that Todd Welsh is the vice chairman is acclaimed.
I would second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there other nominations?
I would assume that either you or Mr. Welsh had opposition.
This would have been voiced right now, right?
It wasn't him.
You not at that meeting?
I am.
So do we need to complete the motion? All in favor say aye. For Mr. Welsh, those opposed? Welcome to the second chair. And you'll have to speak with my wife about getting her to stay in town.
Yeah.
It could be gone. We have the position of the heritage commission open for a representative from the planning commission. Do any volunteers for that position or anyone that has a special interest in that?
You know, I served on it one year, I think, and I, we didn't need a lot and I really enjoyed it. I wouldn't mind serving again if that would be the commission's wishes.
Okay, then we will, do we need to vote him to that or may I appoint him?
Anyone who volunteers. And there's no other volunteers.
It's interesting.
It's all yours. And we do have the board of zoning appeals as well. Currently, Mr. Ryan is serving as your representative and that would be up to him and the commission whether you're mutually interested in that continuing.
And I'm fine to serve in that capacity, but I would certainly open it up to any of you that are interested in it and step down from that. They don't meet so very often, but it's an interesting, interesting committee to be on.
They meet once a month instead of twice.
No one's raising their hand. I will continue to serve in that position.
Okay. So for Crystal's benefit, we have a chairman, Mr. Carl Ryan. We have a vice chairman, Mr. Todd Welsh. We have a continuation of Mr. Kennedy as the heritage commission liaison and Mr. Ryan is our BZA liaison and Mr. Ryan has a meeting on Thursday for the board of zoning appeals. So we're doing a doubleheader this week. As far as other matters, we do have an item scheduled for the second and that will be a public hearing on the 14 individual school sites that are proposed for re-designation to the public use district. That will be an open public hearing. There will be a, basically, an opening of a public hearing on each individual site. So essentially, they will appear as individual items on your agenda and rather than having a single open and closed hearing, there will be, each individual school will ask for any feedback on that particular location, on a location-by-location basis. Also, on the second, each year, the city's tree advisory board and the planning commission collaborate on annual landscape awards. And we had three nominations that worked their way forward for this year and those were, the tree board gives a very nice plaque, which is a, it's, they call it the golden leaf award, but they, they take a portion of a tree that was cut down in Oakdale Park and they construct a, a plaque out of the wood from that. And the nominee this year was the developers of the Heritage at Hawthorne project up there on North Ninth Street. And then two other recipients would be the Sunflower Bank for the work done over on Fifth and Ash at their property there redoing the landscaping there along the Ash and Santa Fe frontages. And Kansas Wesleyan University for the work that they did with the fountains and the landscaping in front of their administration building there. So those, those were three projects that will brought, be brought forward. So the, the start of the meeting will be the presentation of the landscape awards with the tree advisory board and then we'll move to the public hearing portion, which would be the public hearing on the school sites. And then, as I noted, the upcoming, on the 16th, we have an application to amend the conditional use permit to expand the tattoo parlor on East Iron, one storefront east beyond its current configuration. And we have a application that we're sorting throughout in the Foxborough mini-storage area to the west of there. And then we have a number of applications. Nextech is a new provider and the community are wanting in to get into the market of cellular service. They're opening a store out next to Hogwild BBQ on South Ninth Street and they're co-locating antennas and also seeking some individual tower sites that I'm working through with them that would probably be heard on the 16th of October. But the second will be devoted to public school sites and landscape awards. And so under other matters here, if there's any interest by commissioners in communicating to the city commission or to the director of utilities and others that they believe that the city needs to revisit its policy as it relates to water towers, that would be an appropriate place under other matters to bring that up, whether that was in the way of a formal motion or if there was a consensus or majority of the planning commission that thinks that that policy needs to be re-looked at, this would be the venue to do that in.
Well, I'd certainly like to see more information on it. So if you want that in the form of a motion.
Would that, I mean, one thing we can do is ask Ms. Tasker, Director of Utilities, to come and speak to you about the origin of those policies and what, why their position is that way. We could certainly ask that that be done.
You had mentioned something about liability issues and things and I know that all of those types of things exist, but I know that there's also ways of, it's just like Mr. Welsh here, if he would have looked at all of the problems with the Pheasant Ridge addition, he might have said, no, no way, we're not going to do it. But, you know, in, in my mind that there, you know, we need to be creative, we need to, I mean, Mr. Kennedy's point is absolute. We are only going to need more and better communication resources in terms of towers and, so I think that we're going to be negligent if we don't look at stuff like that, other opportunities.
Okay. We will try to bring a report back to you on, on the origins and the whys of why the, it is not any city ordinance or anything that says it's prohibited. It is a, is a policy that they are not allowed on city water towers.
Excuse me. Go ahead, Ken. Well, and I don't recall which one said that she would be willing to help locate some places for towers. I do know from my experience that it's really difficult in Salina with the current ordinances to find locations that allow towers and we're still dependent on towers anyway we look at it.
Right.
I would think we'd want to accept her offer and see if she's got some solutions too, coming from a private citizen's perspective. Where do you put, backyards don't work very well for them.
Yeah.
I think Mr. Brooks made that point in that, that if, if your recommendation is upheld by the city commission and it's determined that Indian Rock Park is off limits, then that sends the message to the providers to look elsewhere. But until there was a definitive no, Mr. Lowthen couldn't tell them no definitively because it's not his final decision to make. But as this works through the process and the final decision is no, as Mr. Brooks put it, that will send a message to them that they need to look elsewhere.
Well, certainly that, that these towers or these antennas are a big enough revenue stream to build log that the city should be looking at, at using stuff that they've already got existing as part of a revenue stream. And, you know, if you've already got a water tower sitting out there and you can plant something up on top of it and just enjoy the financial benefits of that.
The Backson elevators, it seems to have no other purpose in this town but to sit there dilapidated. Can they not go on the top of those elevators?
I mean, the taller the tower, the more, it seems like if you put up three tall towers, 500-foot towers, you're going to have eye-to-eye contact. Or you could put up 100 little towers every 303 blocks that are only 50 foot tall or 25 foot tall, at least they'll have eye-to-eye contact as you go up the hill.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, what do you want? I mean, originally or at the end of the whole deal, we don't have wireless anymore. We have a tower every, somebody.
Right. Well, there was a consultant for the arts that was talking about use of those elevators as well. Maybe an artistic, so I ask aesthetic, use of those might be a solution. And I realize placement is an issue too. I wanted to add to Mr. Mike's comments, liability certainly is a concern. I'd be interested in what we hear from Martha or whoever about the other side of that, which is security because you're concerned about your liability, who goes up there and, and what damage they might do unwittingly or otherwise, so.
Well, we will, we're obliged to, to report back to you on that policy and this is not the last proposal you're going to see, putting up a tower.
I think it's kind of meeting halfway, being able to identify, look at those policies and see if maybe they can be.
Being able to identify, look at those policies and see if maybe they can be updated is showing, at least us trying to help them out. But at the same time, I'm pretty sure that Salina is not unique in this challenge. It is, they try to find other little spots, those little circles on the map. I imagine that this is an issue in many communities, and the only way around it is that they have to be very adept and creative of finding different places for those to go. And I bet that they'll find something, but it would be nice to at least make sure that we're not making things more difficult than they need to be if there are some locations we can open just through policy changes.
When you have 140-foot tall palm tree, that's creative.
So I'm hearing that maybe we'll get a presentation from Tasker or some others.
We'll get information and provide you with the --
But will our concerns about this be passed along to the commission and how they'll see?
Yes, in the report to them that they want, that you were interested in getting further clarification as to why that wasn't feasible.
I don't want to take a lot more time, but I was going to comment earlier that it wasn't appropriate at the time, but, you know, maybe one of those flagpoles would be good if you find Indian Rock Park with a big car lot. Then it would be appropriate.
And I did want to clarify for you that and for Mr. Michaelis, that if a restaurant wants to put up a set of three flagpoles in front of their restaurant, and they're standard flagpoles and they meet the height limits of that district, they're exempt from any regulation. These were here before you today because the purpose of the flagpoles was to support cellular antennas, but we're not going to have a public hearing anytime a business wants to put up a cluster of three standard flagpoles. These were flagpoles that were for the express purpose of supporting cellular service. That's why that was in front of you today. So flagpoles, as a general rule, are exempt from regulation.
Any more remarks, gentlemen? We'll be adjourned.